Madam Clerk, do you want to do the roll?
Suizer Brettafield.
Here.
Suizer Chavez.
Here.
Suizer Mancic.
Here.
Suizer Pacheco.
Here.
Chairman Mendez.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Okay, welcome to the June 24th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin with the invocation and the flag salute. The invocation will be led by District Three. After the invocation, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have our young pastor, Michael Loera, that will lead us in the invocation.
Father, we thank you for this morning. We thank you that everyone has arrived here safely. Right now, I like to lift up all the supervisors as they are going to conduct business today. I ask you that you give them strength, give them wisdom, and give them patience to conduct business and let them make good decisions. And for everyone else here in this room, Father, I lift them up. May you bless their families, bless their businesses and the finances represented here today. Give us this day a beautiful day and let us all leave here happily, safely, and just have a great day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agendas are in the back table for anyone wanting to follow along. Madam Clerk?
Item number one, approve agenda members of the board, Mr. Chairman, members of the audience. Item number nine on your regular agenda is being continued to July 9th.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other item from closed session. The class in matter, 20.1, will not be heard in closed session today.
Any... Okay, thank you. You seconded, yeah. All in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none the motion carries?
We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda items numbers 21 through 80.
Is anyone on the board want to pull any items?
I'm going to pull two.
Okay.
For the Levine Act, I need to pull 78 and 52.
Gary?
Yes. I need to pull item 29, 48, and 54.1, and I need to recuse myself on 52 due to receiving donation.
Was that 52?
Yes.
Okay.
52, and pulling 29, 48, and 54.1.
Okay, so anybody want to make, anybody else? Is there anyone in the public that wants to pull an item off consent?
Good morning, Chairman. I'd like to pull item 26.1.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none the motion carries? We'll move to item three.
Item number three, under Board of Supervisors, presentation retirement plaque to Scott Bailey, Public Defender's Office.
Public defender?
Good morning.
Morning.
Hi. Good morning.
Morning.
Is, are you the retiree?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, where's the public defender? I know you work for the office, but...
The public defender should be here.
Yeah, she said she was going to be here.
Yes.
I haven't texted her this morning, though.
Do you want to do the other one real quick?
Sure.
And then we'll do yours?
Sure.
And if not, then we'll do yours afterwards.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll give her a second to get here.
Item number four, under the Board of Supervisors, presentation retirement plaque to Ronald Hayes, Sheriff's Department, 35 years of service.
All right, there he is. Good morning, Chairman Mendez and members of the board. Today, we're here to discuss, talk about, celebrate, retired Sheriff's Lieutenant Ronald Hayes and his distinguished career with the Fresno County Sheriff's Office, which started in March of 1990. That is 35 years of service. Commendable. Of course, over the course of more than three decades, he served under four sheriffs, Steve McGarian, Richard Pierce, Margaret Mims, and myself. Ronald was sworn in by Sheriff McGarian and quickly became a familiar and trusted president in communities throughout Fresno County. Some of those communities he patrolled included Tarpe, Mayfair, Cowa, Orange Cove, Delray, Easton, Carruthers, Riverdale, and many others. At one point, I believe that Ronald Hayes was looking to become the mayor of Orange Cove and unseat Victor Lopez. Well, funny story, when I was a reserve deputy, I would ride with Deputy Ron Hayes, and we would patrol Orange Cove and Delray on many nights, as many reserves did, because I'll share a story is Ron was the go-to, can-do, I'll-Teach-you guy. He was a mentor for many of us that were in the reserve program at the time, and we do thank Ron for his leadership, his mentorship, and everything that he taught us, although some of those things we forgot. Statute of limitations. In August of 1999, he was selected as a detective assigned to the Ag Crimes Task Force, reinvestigated countless agricultural crimes. His leadership and dedication eventually led to the promotion to Patrol Sergeant by Sheriff Pierce in May of 2003. By November of 2007, Sergeant Hayes had taken on a new responsibility in the Sheriff's Office Special Investigations Division, where he supervises detectives in the Vice and Intelligence Unit. In May of 2013, he transitioned to the Court Services Bureau overseeing operations at the CIS courthouse. In February of 2016, Sheriff Mims promoted Ronald to the rank of Sheriff's Lieutenant. In this capacity, he held a variety of leadership roles, including Watch Commander, managed units such as the Civil Records Dispatch and the Public Records Act Division. He also served as a Patrol Bureau Area Commander, further demonstrating his versatility and commitment to public service. Ronald is a proud husband to his wife Holly, and together they have raised six children, five sons and one daughter, whose ages range from eight to 28. Their home is filled with the joy of five beloved dogs in addition to their six children. Public service runs deep in Ronald's family. He follows in the footsteps of his grandfather, parents, uncles, and cousins, all who have served their communities with honor. Ronald and his family have always placed a strong emphasis on positive community engagement, believing deeply in the power of building trust beyond the call for service. He extends his heartfelt gratitude to his wife Holly, their children for their unwavering support, and the many sacrifices they have made throughout the years. As Ronald closes this chapter of his professional life, he looks forward to devoting his time to his family and creating countless more cherished memories with them. We wish retired Sheriff Lieutenant Ronald Hayes a long, happy, and healthy retirement with his family. Ladies and gentlemen, Ron Hayes. Now it's your turn.
I'll just try to keep it short and sweet. I remember him as a reserve, and I remember looking at him, saying, you know what, you're going to do something one of these days. And I followed him along with countless other subjects that had come to the Sheriff's Office, both men and women, have been phenomenal. Sheriff McGarian started me off as my mentor, and I still, to this day, still talk to him. And I remember prior to Pierce's passing, he also was very supportive of me after my mom passed. And Mims, Sheriff Mims, I can't say nothing else, but she was one of my first sergeants. And like I said, and I come full circle to where a young man that I used to mentor is now my boss. So, it is what it is, but I thank you guys, and I do appreciate it. He's going to do a phenomenal job, and I said, I think he's going to continue on with the great legacy of the Sheriff's Office. Like I said, Sheriff Minst and Sheriff McGarian taught me, lead by, by being the example, being positive, and maintaining positive interaction with the public. Thank you.
Just hang on for a second. You know, I can't thank you enough for your long service. And what kind of the interesting thing is, you've been here so long that you were at once a dare officer at Carruthers Elementary.
Correct.
And Vicky was the school secretary, and I think Josh was one of the students.
Wow. I actually had hair back then, so let's just talk about that. A lot skinnier and had more hair, so yes. But it's been a fantastic time.
Yeah.
And like I said, I come from a long legacy with my grandfather, my father, and all the other countless people in my family. So, it's been, it's been my honor to serve.
So appreciative. Anybody else on the board want to say anything?
Just thank you.
Yeah, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Go ahead and have your family come up if they're here.
I don't know if you want to have them all come up. Come on, come on up. Move the dog. Come on in. Oh, I'm sorry.
I want. Scratch. Thank you.
Gary and I like the tall ones.
It's a good thing Ron doesn't have hair anymore.
Here we go, one, two, three, one, two, three. We're going to take a couple here. One, two, three, one, two, three. Okay.
Our public defender is here for item number three, so we'll return to item number three, under the Board of Supervisors, presentation retirement plaque to Scott Bailey, Public Defender's Office, 25 years of service.
Oh, there she is. I hope you're not laid in court like that.
Good morning. Yes, Scott has been a dedicated and loyal member of our office since 1999. Ninety-eight. Ninety-nine. Okay. Scott truly embodies the very definition of what a public defender is. He's a warrior who has fought every day defending the Constitution and our clients, which is often not easy to do, and it's not popular, but it is vital to our democracy. Scott set the bar high for the rest of us at the Public Defender's Office. He is a fierce advocate, he's compassionate, he has a stellar work ethic, he's intelligent, creative, and he has changed countless lives, and he's also saved lives, too. Scott's ability to connect with juries is unmatched. He has a gift for weaving his client's stories into compelling narratives that juries can understand and believe. He's a master orator and a fearless fighter for justice, never ever hesitating to speak truth to power. Scott has also mentored and coached so many attorneys who have come through our doors. His impact on the office and the criminal justice system and our community is undeniable. His legacy will live on, so I want to thank Scott for his service, for his unwavering commitment to defend the Constitution and our clients.
Thank you. I, good morning. I actually did not come here with a speech. When I graduated law school in 1998 in San Diego, I sent a cover letter and a resume to every public defender's office in the state of California. Fresno was the first one to respond, and I'm here because of that. I've loved serving this county as a public defender, and at some point, I realized that as a public defender, I was a county employee, and as a county employee, we are all serving the public of the county of Fresno, and that being a public servant is a very good thing. My daughter is now an employee at the county of Fresno. We had 750,000 people here when I moved here, we're now over a million. County Fresno is a good place to work, it's a good employer. You have all done a very good job making this a good place to work and a good place to serve the public. Thank you very much for the recognition today.
Comments from the board?
Well, I wish you the best, Scott. I work with you on the Law Library Board, and I know being a public defender is not an easy job. You have to defend people who are often guilty, but they have every right to have defense, and you provide that service. So, congratulations and job well done.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you. They're not guilty until proven.
Probably guilty. Could be.
Maybe guilty.
Yeah. No, I mean, that was a very tough job you have. I hope you have something good in retirement that you're doing. I don't know if you're going to go into practice for yourself, or...
Probably a little bit of practice in my future. Hard to imagine not doing that.
Right. I mean, you quit practicing, that becomes a bad deal. So, I hope you keep practicing, and once you come up with your family and...
Thank you, Chairman Mendez.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, we will take up the items that were pulled from consent. Item 26.1, pulled by a member of the audience under Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, under Administrative Policy 34 for competitive bids or requests for proposals, determine that an exception to the competitive bidding requirement under AP 34 is satisfied and a sole source of suspension competition is warranted, and that the best interest of the county would be served by entering into an agreement with venue and sites and analytics.
All right, good morning, Chairman, and fellow board members. My name is Riley Talford, President of SEIU Local 521 Fresno Chapter. I come before you today on behalf of former revenue collections employees and the public. On May 6th, the board approved for the deletion of RCU employees as recommended by the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, and Tax Collector. The claim used as justification to eliminate these positions was to address financial inefficiencies due to high cost of net collection. What was not mentioned was the loss of front-end services provided to the public by collections representatives that are versed in adhering to Fair Net Collection Practices Act. As county employees, we are not servicing the public, but for the public. Thus meaning, claims of not breaking even are very misaligned. Direct services that are no longer being performed by trained and experienced employees include, to name but a few, clearing incorrect debts, providing explanation as to why they are being charged, writing up payment slips, and just answering the phone. My concern continues in that in time of the resolution to the salary amendment claiming cost savings, there was no mention of the item before you today that comes with a substantial cost. Furthermore, I must speak on the treatment to these employees. First, the basic item misled is borne in believing there will be no financial harm to the three impacted employees that would have the option of reassignment to suitable positions. While the fact their options works to accept a $78 pay cut per pay period to another classification or be laid off. Facing termination and loss of pay and benefits, two of my members under duress took the pain to motion, and the other, unable to accept the indignity shown for over 20-plus years of service, was laid off. I cannot imagine substantial loss of a combined 45 years of knowledge lost to the public. Thus, as you ponder today's decision, I would like to know what is the current operational cost of the system in place today, and how much will it increase with a potential upgrade system? Next, I'd also like to know how will this new system account for the front-end services lost to the public? Thank you.
Any discussion from the board?
I just have a quick question, Chairman. Do we have Mr. Garcia here today? Or Representative?
Hi, Frank Gomez, Deputy Treasurer, Tax Collector. He's not in this morning?
Could you just, could you just address some of the concerns that were raised by Mr. Talford with regards to the positions that were eliminated, and then this item is it the same work that employees were doing?
It's the program that is used, that would have been used by the collectors, also by account clerks, accountants, and other staff. The reason why for the contract is because the current one that we have is sunsetting. So, this is the company that purchased it, and so in order to continue any type of services, we would need it.
And then do we anticipate the cost of this going up exponentially as the service is provided?
No, right now, we anticipate that it should be about the same, as long as we keep the mailing within a certain range. After that, it'll escalate 5% each year.
So, 5% each year on top of what this amount is?
Which the previous one also was.
For how long?
Currently, this is an evergreen, but we will look after three years, continuously to look for another type of program.
All right, those are the questions I had. Chairman?
Any other questions? Bring it back to the board. Is there any other public comment? You had your bite at the apple.
Yes, sir, I was just asking if you could address the loss of the direct services to the public that are no longer being performed, and there was no comment on that.
I can't hear what he says.
This software project has been in the works for a long time, starting back in 2019, trying to get the upgrade to this. So, we've been working on this with the Auditor, Controller's Office for a long time. It's, it's, would have been the same software that employees in the R, you know, if they had left the RCU unit alone, would have been the same software.
I don't think, I don't think he was asking about that, legal counsel. I think he was asking about the services. What type of services are the public not going to receive now as a result of?
It was discussed, oh, sorry. It was discussed that we would go into a passive collections, where previously, there'd be somebody calling continuously. So, the loss of services, I guess, would be phone calls, but we found predominantly people would pay if a lien, they wanted to get that released, or through FTV.
So, with this program as it stands now, would people still be able to call and talk to somebody?
Yeah, so they would call our office for general questions as far as like how much is owed, when it's owed, anything specific to the debt, they would go back to the department.
And they would have somebody to actually physically speak to?
Yes, if they had questions, yes.
Okay. That's the question they were asking. Thank you.
So, what do you guys want to do?
I'll move for staff's recommendation on this item.
A second.
Got a second? All in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. What's, Madam Clerk?
We now move to item number 29, pulled by Suizer Brettafield, under the Sheriff, Coroner, Public Administrator, under Administrative Policy 34 for competitive bids or requests for proposal, determine that an exception to the competitive bidding requirement under AP 34 is satisfied, and a suspension competition is warranted, and that the best interest of the county would be served by entering into an agreement with BMS Family Counseling Services.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. How many people actually receive services per year for this? Do you know how many that would be?
It's, it's a lot, because the services are going to be, it's not necessarily that they're going to go for the entire year. It could be after just one significant event. We may have an influx of 40 that go as a result of that one event, and then we have some that go consistently throughout the year, obviously, for ongoing stuff, but to track that exact number, I don't, I just don't have it. We can, we can pull it. When we get these bills, we get them based on anonymous numbers, so that we're not being told exactly which employees are going for their privacy.
Are they all LFMTs? I saw interns, LFMTs. I'm wondering about our folks seeing interns. I mean, obviously, they have to be trained, but, I mean, I want our folks to be receiving the very best of care.
Yes, it's going to vary. So, all the way up to the owner, Dr. Sanders, I mean, she's, she has her doctorate, as well as all the way down to LMFT interns. We had a conversation with her specifically. She brought that to our attention and said, are you comfortable with that? She walked us through the, kind of the capacities in which she would be using the interns, and when we finished those discussions with her, we were completely fine. There's an oversight for it, and we have, you know, we've had other services in the past, and we do ask our employees their satisfaction level with this service, because at the end of the day, this is a relationship that's built on trust.
Right.
And they come back, and they absolutely love this service. That was the biggest reason for our suspension of competition.
So, you've gotten very positive feedback from your folks?
We have since, I think 2015 is when this whole thing started, and Vicky is incredibly engaging with the Sheriff's Office. She reaches out proactively to say, hey, is there things? I know we've used her for other things. We've had her come in with our Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. I mean, that's a horrendous assignment with the things they have to look at. She will just come by and check on them, and, you know, as you know, this is about relationships and trust, and she's built that, and she's put in the hard work over time.
Great. You said she's a doctor, clinical psychologist, or?
You know, I know that she recently got her doctorate, because she was expressing to me her process that she was going to. I didn't really dive into what it was specifically.
No problem. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there any public comment? You got a motion?
Second.
Prove second. All in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none the motion carried?
We move to item 48, pulled by Suizer Brettafield, under Behavior Health, approved and authorized, Chairman, to execute agreement 24-79038-0000 with the California Department of State Hospitals to establish diversion program funding for five years.
Hi, Susan, thank you.
Hi.
So, these are what we call justice-involved individuals. These are people who have committed crimes.
Correct.
But they have mental health issues.
Correct.
What kind of crimes? I mean, obviously, I assume these are felonies, but how, how serious are these crimes?
So, the court retains, thank you Supervisor Susan Holt, your Behavioral Health Director. So, the court retains the ultimate authority to divert or not divert, and they're restricted on what crimes are eligible based on statute, but there is a wide range of crimes. Some crimes are excluded due to the level of violence, for example, but there are many felonies that are eligible for diversion. I don't have a list on the top of my head, but the court retains the jurisdiction based on statute, and certain crimes are excluded based on statute from eligibility.
And these folks are not in the jail, so they're treated in what kind of setting?
So, they could be treated anywhere in our continuum of care. We do have a dedicated forensic wraparound program for this population. We would utilize the Department of State Hospitals' funding to pay for things such as housing, the 24/7 wraparound supports, responding to proactively, making sure that we eliminate crisis before it happens in the community. Treatment, it would include psychiatry, case management, peer supports, evidence-based practices for psychotherapy, working with persons who have those criminogenic factors as well as the clinical needs.
Is there a rate of recidivism for people who are in this program, who have gone and either left the program and committed crimes because they weren't in jail?
So, it's relatively new. This was implemented in 2020, so I don't have recidivism data yet, but I do have the success data of the folks who were diverted. Thirty-three of the folks who were diverted graduated out of the program, which is a pretty high success rate for a population of persons with complex needs, 33 out of 55, completely graduated. I do, I could get from our colleagues in the Sheriff's Office the recidivism data to report back to you.
Okay, what is gra- What does graduated mean, when you say they've graduated?
So, they've graduated through the court. So, the court has determined that they've met all of the legal requirements to be diverted out of the judicial system, and they've met their treatment goals as well. So, they're sustaining higher levels of recovery, they've engaged in treatment programs, pursuing progress on their individually identified life goals, whether that be employment, reunifying with family members, et cetera.
Can you bring back to the board recidivism?
Yes. In what format would the board like to have that information?
You can do it in a memo, unless you want to bring it back. I'm, my concern is, in this state, we minimize crimes. And this program, when I was reading, I was thinking, is this a program that we are doing that very thing, whether it's Prop forty-seven, fifty-seven, A B one, or no bill? We can go on and on. Is this something that places the community at risk because we've come up with this creative program?
So, we'll be happy to work with our justice partners to get the recidivism data back to the board. The diversion statute remains. Whether we accept these funds or not, the court could divert individuals based on their legal authority to do so. We would just not have access to these dollars, and we would have to consume realignment dollars and other dollars in order to support persons. We would not be able to provide as robust a service package without the action your board is considering today to accept the state's money to do so. The other, the other risk for our board, if I may, is just that this diversion program is a strategy to reduce individuals who have been found incompetent to stand trial from going to the state hospital. And if we don't reduce those numbers locally, we have a penalty. So, the state will actually take away our money if we're not keeping folks out of the state hospital.
Understand. But my bottom line is always making sure that we, as a board, are doing what we need to do to make sure that we're protecting people. And this is a program, that's a diversion program. I'm not sure what the level of crime is that these people are being diverted from.
Yep.
And so, I think it's a responsible question to ask.
Yep.
What's the recidivism rate of these people in the program, even though they're graduating? I want to know more.
We'll be happy to prepare a, a package, possibly through a board briefing report, that could include the nature of the crimes for each person who was diverted, and any recidivism data that we have from our justice partners. We'd be happy to do that. If the board would give us a little bit of time to package that up, we'd be happy to do it.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you, Susan.
Of course.
Chairman, just, to our director, if you could include the data that Supervisor Brettafield included, but also just the brief overview on, on what you described, the penalty?
Yes.
Kind of the process for us not diverting to... You mentioned to the state hospital?
So, the, I believe it's Department of Healthcare Services that would take the money back from us, but don't quote me on the agency. These state agencies all have different acronyms. But the, the state's goal is to reduce the number of individuals who are going to the state hospital, because that's on their dime. That's not on counties' dime for us to pay. And there's been a massive influx of individuals found incompetent to stand trial for felony charges. And again, those are state responsibilities. Folks have lingered for months, if not years, waiting to get into state hospital. So, the state is very motivated to try these strategies that are passed in statutes such as diversion, and they've lever, levied that penalty on counties. If we don't stay under the growth cap, we can include that in the briefing.
Just a brief overview of, of that, and the criteria that they use, like the data points, what numbers, percentage?
Yes. We, we can package that up as well. Happy to do it.
Okay. Do you think we get that within a month, maybe a month?
I think thirty days is reasonable.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I think you just, that was a pretty good point. I mean, why be in a program, you know, if it's not effective?
Yeah.
Because they could be just dumping their patients on us, which is a strategy the state does on everything, so.
Yeah. We have lots of things called realignment.
Right.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. You got a second? All in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion?
Thank you, Susan.
We now move to item number fifty-two, which was pulled by Supervisor Maxic and Supervisor Brettafield. Due to the Levine Act, they are recusing themselves. This item is under Behavior Health, approve and authorize the Chairman to execute a master agreement with individual and group providers throughout patient specialty mental health services effective July one, twenty twenty-five.
We don't need a briefing. Okay. Got a second. Is there any public comment on this? All in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mosin Carey, thank you.
Next item is fifty-four point one. And this item was pulled by Supervisor Brettafield, under Behavior Health, a top resolution authorizing the county to participate as a specialty mental health and supportive service provider in a grant application with the Housing Authority of the City of Fresno, California, for participation in the Co-C builds program.
Yes. And just on this one, my only problem with this, which is a big problem, on Avalon Commons, the housing authority, this, this project is costing thirty-eight point three million dollars. There's forty-five units, and that's eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars per unit. That's not something I can support, even though we're not really doing it, we're just providing the services. It's just something, for me, it gets, gets worse and worse. This started when, years ago, they would cost about three hundred thousand per unit. Now, we're up to eight hundred and fifty, and we're going to blink our eyes, it'll be one million dollars per unit, which is, quote, affordable housing, which is anything but affordable. And all of you, the taxpayers, are subsidizing this, so I will be a no vote. Just wanted to pull it for that reason.
Go ahead.
Just, and then, for the, the county, behavioral health's component, is it a twenty-year commitment? Or is it a fifty-year commitment?
Actually, this one, Supervisor, is fifteen-year commitment.
Fifteen, okay.
And through the M O U, we would actually be able to utilize some of those grant funds to offset our costs.
And our commitment is how much in dollars? And this is wraparound services after the units are built, correct?
About, yes, correct. And about ninety thousand a year. And again, that we, we would be receiving some funding if the housing authority receives the grant. And also, we would be able to enjoy the Medi-Cal revenue from the treatment services.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, you got a motion to approve. Is there any public comment? Hearing none?
I'll, I'll second that and just recognize Gary's points extremely valid, but I will say that our participation in this has not, nothing to do with the construction. It's the wraparound services. And so, that's why I can support this particular item.
Right. We're just...
Yes.
Observing the state's dumpster fire.
And was...
They're using money to start the fire, literally.
And the motion maker was...
Louise, yeah.
Okay, I can't hear. Okay, thank you.
So, there's no, is there any public comment on this? Hearing none? All in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
No.
One against, yeah.
One no.
Four one. Thank you.
We now move to item number seventy-eight, which was pulled by Supervisor Maxic, due to the Levine Act. Their Administrative Policy number thirty-four for competitive bids for requests for proposal determined that the exception of the competitive bidding requirement is satisfied, and a suspension competition is warranted.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need you to read it.
Due, due to unusual, extraordinary circumstances.
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion, motion to approve?
Second. All in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes all consent items that were pulled from this morning. We return to your regular agenda, which, item number five, under Supervisor Pacheco and Supervisor Brettafield, conduct first hearing to amend the Ordinance Code of Fresno County Title Nine relating to dog and cat licensing and control to repeal Sections nine point zero four point zero four five, nine point zero four point four, zero four seven, nine point zero four point zero four nine.
Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been working on this, Supervisor Pacheco and I, for a number of months, not alone, with a bunch of people that I want to acknowledge first. I want to recognize Supervisor Pacheco as the cosponsor, Amina Flores Becker, Deputy C A O, Zach Adams, County Counsel, Sim Dillon, Department of Public Health, Eric Armstrong, Department of Public Health, Almatouras from the City of Fresno, Sergeant John Wages, Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant David Pugliese, Sheriff's Office, Priscilla Walcott, Fresno Humane, Maria Garcia, Fresno Humane, and Ron Alexander, County Administrative Office. We met for three meetings over the last several months to come up with this ordinance. As we know, Fresno County is, is grappling with a severe dog and cat overpopulation crisis leading to overwhelmed animal shelters, and significant challenges in managing stray and abandoned animals. This escalating problem necessitates immediate action, including implementation of a comprehensive new breeding ordinance and crucial amendments to the existing animal co, control code. Currently, Fresno County animal shelters are operating at or beyond capacity, struggling to house the continuing, continuing influx of dogs and cats. The situation is exacerbated by uncontrolled breeding, with many individuals breeding dogs and then abandoning puppies when unable to sell them. This not only burdens the county shelter, but also contributes to the growing population of free-roaming dogs, which can pose public health and safety risks. To effectively combat this overpopulation, we have to prioritize the following. We have to enact comprehensive dog and cat breeding ordinance, which this does, and this is critical for the regulation and enforcement of dog and cat breeding in Fresno County. This ordinance does several things. It mandates breeder permits, requires all individuals breeding dogs or cats to obtain a permit, and this will allow for tracking and accountability of breeding operations. It'll limit litter frequency for establishing limits, by establishing limits on the number of litters a licensed breeder can produce annually to prevent irresponsible breeding. It adds stricter penalties for unlicensed breeding by imposing significant fines and misdemeanor charges for individuals found breeding dogs or cats without a permit or in violation of the ordinance. And that means a thousand-dollar fine for each dog that is illegally bred, as well as potentially six months in jail. This also promotes responsible ownership by emphasizing the importance of spaying and neutering pets to reduce unwanted litters, and increases the transparency in sales by requiring breeders to include their permit and license numbers in any advertisement for the sale of dogs or cats. By taking these decisive steps to implement a new breeding ordinance and amend the existing animal control code, Fresno County will make significant strides in addressing dog and cat overpopulation. This proactive approach will not only alleviate the burden on local animal shelters, but will also promote responsible pet ownership, improve public safety, and enhance the overall well-being of the animals in the community. And with that, I would like to have Sim come up. There are some slides, we're going to lower the light so you can see them on the side, and you can get a visual indication of really what we're dealing with, with these illegal animal breeders. Are you ready, Sim? Can you hit the light? You ready?
I'm ready. Good morning, Board.
Can you get these lights too?
Sim Dillon, Public Health?
Or no?
Perfect.
There you go.
Good morning, Board. I'll provide a brief description of each of the images that you see up here. All of these images were captured within Fresno County, a few of them, City of Fresno, but the vast majority of them are in the County of Fresno, which shows basically the unchecked population of pets. This first image was provided by Mona Ahmed. She is with furry friends. She works very closely with Fresno County Animal Shelter, and she works with the city shelter as well. It just shows the, the extent of what you see out in the community. Next slide, please. So, picture one, this kind of shows the unlicensed breeding operation. Basically, this first picture was two nursing mothers found that were reported to us. They had two litters. The first litter had parvo, meaning the, the puppies, unfortunately, none of them survived. The second mother, her pups were at risk because of the parvo exposure to the first litter. Fresno Humane took decisive action. They entook the, the sick mother, along with the pups. Those were surrendered over to Fresno Humane. Another pregnant female was also found on the property, along with two males. The, the owners were breeding and selling pups, and agreed to spay and neuter their existing animals and license them, and, and surrender any of the, the existing pets that they had. The second picture that you see on the screen is a hoarding case. This was a, a property in, or a county island property near Fresno Airport. This is a property that Fresno Humane has dealt with prior to. Total animals removed from this property, and this image kind of highlights the condition that these animals were living in, was about a hundred thirty animals from a small residential property in, on a county island since 2020. The initial interaction that Fresno Humane had with this property owner, they removed several animals. The, the, the issue we were having was there, there was not, there wasn't an enforcement piece to, to individuals breeding animals, which highlights the need for this breeding ordinance. In, earlier this year, we dealt with this property again. A little over eighty dogs were moved, moved in total off this property. Next slide. So, the first picture that you see here, this picture is actually off of a canal. It was an enclosure where approximately twenty dogs were found in a, in a makeshift enclosure out in a rural part of Fresno County. Initially, the, the, when Fresno Humane made contact with the individual, the individual claimed that they lived in the city of Fresno. From there, they, they received notices and violations, so they moved the animals out to a rural property that they said belonged to their friend. This property owner didn't have any sort of plan in place. They moved their unwanted litter over to a, to a rural portion of Fresno County without any plan to what they were going to do. And then, the second picture that you see up on the screen i, is another picture from Mona. This, this highlights the extent of the litters that she gets constantly contacted in regards to. Next picture. And this picture is puppies from that canal property. No mother was present, so Fresno Humane actually entook those animals, which highlights the, the significance of the number of animals our shelter constantly sees. Anytime they, they are exposed to any of these breeding properties, and animals do have to be removed, it inundates our shelter. Excellent. So, these two pictures, same property, this is off Cornelia and Jensen. There are approximately thirty dogs. This was a puppy mill. Fresno Humane was made aware of it. The dogs were living in terrible condition, no water, limited food, and some of them had severe injuries as well. Fresno Humane worked closely with S P C A, their Humana Officer, in order to provide assistance in regards to the cruelty to these animals. The operation that the owner was running, he was disguising his operation as a business for breeding and for training, and he was posting as well. That's how we were, we were made aware of that. This was in a county location. The county location has been shut down. He no longer operates there, but we are aware that this person also had facilities, one location within the city of Fresno, and then one location up in Stockton. We're still collaborating with our local partners to, to make sure that those existing properties are also shut down. Next slide, please. The, the next slide that you see up here is a, is a business property, where the owner of the property had an initial litter that was reported to us. That individual actually sold some of those animals as well. When he had this second litter that you see up here, Fresno Humane made contact with them. Unfortunately, the, the owner was non-responsive. The, the mother and pups were intaked, as the owner wasn't present or found at that time, and no one reclaimed them as well. So, this is, this highlights the extent of the problem, a known property where animals were removed, and then the owner not, not coming forward to claim his animals. Slide seven. So, the first picture that you see up here is from that canal property, so highlights the condition that the animals were, were living in. It was a makeshift enclosure. The second picture is a repeat. That's the puppy mill off of Cornelia. Next slide. So, the first picture that you see on this slide is a, a property up in the, the foothill community, Yocuts, Squaw Valley. Yocuts Squaw Valley. There were reports of a mother dog and pups at large, not only at large off of her property but on neighboring properties as well. Fresno Humane, when they made contact, the individual surrendered two pups. They agreed to spay and neuter the mother as a contingency of citations, but then deferred after those pups were removed, resulting in continued citation. But it highlights the importance of if there was a heavier piece of enforcement, the compliance by the individual. We are still receiving reoccurring calls for loose dogs. The owner is, we know that the owner is actively breeding and posting online, which this ordinance will help us enforce. The second dog that you see there, or the second picture that you see there, is unfortunate circumstance of overbreeding. This is a Frenchy that you see up there. It actually came in with a vaginal prolapse. Similar issues are seen where dogs are just overused for breeding purposes. And then afterwards, once the owner or the individuals breeding these animals have no further use to them, they're dumped. This dog was actually dumped and found by Fresno Humane, or reported and then found by Fresno Humane, like I mentioned, with the prolapse injury, after years of abusive breeding. Next slide. Perfect. So picture one is actually off that Yocuts Dane property that I had mentioned earlier. This was actually one of the animals that was surrendered. There's online postings by this person, so there is an enforcement piece that Fresno Humane can take action on further. The second picture that you see up here is a case Fresno Humane investigated. The owner surrendered two mothers, keeping the males, but with the promise of neutering those animals. But it, this was one of those properties that the individual was compliant, they came forward, let Fresno Humane know that yes, we were breeding, but surrendered all the animals, and further citations were placed on them. Next slide, please. And then this last slide, I wanted to include this, because all of the previous slides were examples of Fresno Humane being out in the field and actually observing noncompliance or issues with breeding. This property, this property owner is a nearby property off of Olive, Brawley and, near Brawley and Olive. The property owner actually communicates regularly with Fresno Humane. This is one of these individuals that is doing their best attempt to build a facility to house animals and to breed them, but just needs some sort of regulatory side on how to do it properly, which highlights there are members in our community that are wanting a breeding ordinance in place that allows them to safely and effectively breed animals, but under compliance of Fresno County.
Thank you, Sim.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you can turn the lights on. So as you can see, the problem is pervasive, significant, and we intend to crack down on it. With that, I'd like to pass it to my co-sponsor Supervisor Pacheco.
Well, as we saw, I think, a picture is worth a thousand words. I'd like to compliment my colleague Supervisor Brettafield. Through his relationship, we were able to bring in City of Fresno employees and not recreate the will, but build from the Fresno City ordinance, learn of the deficiencies, plans they're making to increase their ordinance, and have ours come in. I'd also like to thank Zach of our council, did a very, very thorough job, and after three meetings, we feel we have all the loopholes closed. We have strong teeth, and for the two ladies that are in the audience, we hope to give them some teeth. They have a tireless job to go out to protect the animals that can't protect themselves. They do it every day, and irregardless of how well they do, they have more waiting for them the next day. So this is in response for myself, and I'm sure many of my colleagues here on the dais, we receive many, many calls, that although the City of Fresno, the County of Fresno, and various cities throughout our entire county have built new animal facilities, they are at capacity, they are full, and they are turning healthy animals away because they can't take anymore. So while this will not completely solve the problem, I hope that it will help to alleviate some of the burden and give our staff the relief that they need in their very thankless job, but I'm sure very rewarding every day. And again, I'd like to thank my colleague for all his work. He did very, very thorough, and all of the many people that he read off at the beginning, with their help, we feel this is a very solid and sound ordinance and much, much needed.
I think this is way long overdue. I'm glad you guys took the time to get this done. I've gone to the, even the rural areas and some of the rural towns, the unincorporated towns, are being overran by dogs with no owners, and I've never seen in all my years out in the country as many dogs that are just roaming around in packs with no owners, and it's long overdue, and thank you.
Thank you.
I had to echo all the praises. Yeah, I too would like to thank Supervisor Brettafield as well as Supervisor Pacheco for taking the lead on this. Well done, and looking forward to supporting it here shortly.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to also thank Supervisor Brettafield and Supervisor Pacheco for your leadership in this. This has probably been one of the most popular items since I've been here with regards to folks reaching out and, you know, asking us to do this. Obviously, we're limited in what we can talk about through the brown act, but Supervisor Brettafield and I have worked previously on some of these issues. I want to thank you for doing this, but also want to take the opportunity to thank the rescues that have been doing a lot of great work in our community. I know that they do with their heart, they're very compassionate, and I also know that they're exhausted. I follow a lot of their pages. My family has been a foster home for some of our doggies. That's actually how we ended up with a dog. We thought we had a foster, and it turned into a permanent home. Shout out to Mindy watching at home. But our cat population too, also want to make sure that we don't forget that. It's very important. I know that there are a number of schools out there that now have this challenge. I think TNR is working on a couple of initiatives, so I'd like to see them included. And just for the benefit of the public, what would be the process for our folks to report these? Do we have a number that they're going to be calling, a centralized number?
So reporting is still going to be through Fresno Humane. The number is 559-600-PETS. That's the main line for the animal shelter. That can be texted, it could be called, and then there's a, the Fresno Humane's website as well, has a reporting webpage as well.
So folks can report that online as well, too?
Online and via phone, telephone and via text as well.
Okay, great. We'll get that information from them so we can blast it out and make sure that folks have this information. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there, I'm going to go to the public. Is there any public comment on this? Thank you. Do I bring it back to the board?
I'd like to make a motion.
Make a Neil second.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, is going to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you for.
Mr. Chairman, there'll be a press conference at 11:00. I invite the board to please be there at 11:00 and invite all the media, and maybe the B will show up. If it's something other than anti-Trump, maybe they'll show up today.
Yeah.
We now move to item number six, under the agriculture, approve amendment to the salary resolution deleting five positions from the Department of Agorg 4010 effective July 21st, 2025.
This is a hard one. Good morning, Chairman members, Chairman Mendez, members of the board, Melissa Craigan, Agricultural Commissioner, and Sealer of Ways and Measures. The item before you today proposes to eliminate five positions and reclassify two positions within the Department of Agriculture. Out of the five positions proposed for elimination, four are currently occupied. This may lead to layoffs if the affected individuals cannot be reassigned or choose not to accept available positions in other departments. These reductions are intended to address budget shortfall for fiscal year 2025, 2026, while minimizing the impact on performance and delivery of mandated programs and services. Our approach aims to preserve other revenue sources, thereby avoiding further staffing reductions and service impacts. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the board? I know you do a lot of inspections, you know, you have to have staff available to do it. I just want to tell a funny story. This is, hell, I think it's 25 years ago. We were pick, going to pick, getting ready to pick seed cotton, you know, planting seed. Of course, pickers need to be inspected, you know, because the county actually has a certificate that they fill out to give to the seed company that was inspected, and nobody really knew how to inspect a cotton picker. So when the person came out, this is way before your time, 25 years ago, I showed him how to inspect.
Would you be surprised? I would have been a brand-new inspector at that time.
Yeah, I actually showed him how to inspect a cotton picker. So, of course, mine passed, but. Any other questions? Is there any comment from the public? You got three minutes, and your time, we're going to start the clock here in a second.
Which slide do you want? Start with the calendar. Thank you so much for your time, Board. Thank you, Chairman Mendez, Vice Chair Brettafield, Honorable Board Members, Cao Nerland, Councilman, Council Seater Borg, as well as Bernice. Thank you for your assistance with this. I'm Vera Scott Slater, and I'm a resident of District Four and an employee of the County of Fresno in the Department of Agriculture, and I am one of those positions that would be affected and possibly laid off. I began my career with the County of Fresno back in 2006, under Ralph Jimenez, Beth Bandy, and have continued my service under Commissioners Jerry Prieto, Carol Hafner, Les Wright, and currently, Melissa Craigan. I thought that that would make the print a little bit easier to read, but it looks like it's still very small. I stand before you today to ask that the Board not approve this item and that the CAO consider revisiting other options that would preserve and protect current county staff by mitigating the requested layoffs and elimination of positions. The agenda item has carefully outlined its layoffs, but what concerns me is what it does not clearly say. Where some departments may leave vacancies unfilled to meet budget and salary shortfalls, however, this is not the case in the Ag Department. On the calendar side, you can see vacancies are quickly being filled while employees are simultaneously being laid off. The yellow portion were interviews that I was asked to schedule and proctor. The brown is the notification date for me that I would possibly be laid off, and then the greens are the announcements that came out of those that were being promoted, hired from other counties, and the positions that were being filled. On the opposite side, the reason given in the agenda item for the layoffs, the reorganization, was to address projected budget shortfalls. But as I tried to illustrate, with the recent hirings of the upper supervisory positions of deputy supervising ag standard specialist, would not create savings but drastically add to spending. Also, on that calendar side, I did not include also dates where there are going to be district offices refurnished as well as relocated. I have darkened the middle line on that graph because that is the position that will be filled by someone from Kings County and be added to the staff starting July 21st, whose salary, my salary is the bottom and the others.
Okay, go ahead and try to finish up here.
It's just one last part.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've watched your Board previously and was honored to see that the Board chose to forego relocation to accommodate staff's well-being, and I ask that the Board and CAO continue that direction and care for the support, protection, and trust of employees by not approving this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the Board or the CAO?
I can make a brief comment. I want to mention first that our department heads are given very tough choices right now. They are given the choice of looking to next year, looking at making 5% cuts, but yet maintaining service levels, and doing that is very difficult. I know even as that presentation was made, it was difficult. They're not just positions, we're talking about people. I worked with Vera, actually, when she was hired in Human Resources all those years ago, and so we're very aware of that, and we also call it the county family. So as we go through this process, it's very difficult. But that being said, we need to, we need to make those cuts, we need to be very diligent in finding ways to do that, but also to find, the ideal thing is to find opportunities and positions within the county for employees that are affected, and that may be in other departments, that may be in other places, but we're going to see more of these difficult choices coming, and, but we want to make sure we treat the employees that are affected with dignity and try to find places for them that give them a future here in the county.
I appreciate you coming. I know it wasn't easy to do, and you did a great presentation, and I understand, you know, how important this is, and we all are very sensitive to all 8,000 people who work for the county. So, thank you.
Is there any other public comment? I'll bring it back to the Board. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I got a second?
I second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, is going to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to take item eight before seven due to the ballots we received?
Yes.
Okay. We'll take up item eight. At this time, Public Works and Planning conduct public protest hearing and receive written protests from property owners on their tenants currently receiving water and/or sewer service from Fresno County Water Works District 40, Shaver Springs.
Good morning, Board Members. Chris Bump, Department of Public Works and Planning. The item before you today is a protest hearing to increase water and sewer service fees for Water Works District 40, Shaver Springs. Water Works 40 provides services to 69 residential lots for water and sewer and one out-of-district residential water user. The proposed fee structure includes a base and a usage component for water and a fixed monthly charge for sewer. The new structure is intended to recover operation maintenance costs, payback unpaid charges, and raise appropriate reserves. And at the conclusion of staff presentation, after addressing any questions your Board may have, the public portion of the hearing should be opened by your Board and testimony received from those here today wishing to address your Board. At the conclusion of the public protest hearing, staff will tabulate the protest letters and report back to your Board the results. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, is there any questions from the Board for staff?
I'll hold my questions and comments till the end of the hearing.
Okay. Okay, anytime prior to the close of the protest hearing, property owners wishing to submit a letter of protest or change or withdraw their earlier submitted letter of protest may be requested to the office of the Clerk to the Board at the window outside the Board Chambers. No letters of protest will be accepted, and no withdrawals will be allowed after the protest hearing has been closed. No staff except for the Clerk's deputies may accept a letter of protest. The public portion of this protest hearing is now open. Are there any questions or comments from the public? This is a public comment. If you want to comment on this, this is your time. Okay, do I have a motion to, I guess I have to have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved?
Second.
Second. All in favor, is going to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this is approved, and the public portion is now closed. Tabulation of the letter of the protest will now take place. Members of the public wishing to observe the tabulation process are welcome to accompany staff.
There are 17 envelopes. Would you like, staff is taking them to tabulate. Would you like to take up item 10 as well?
Yes.
Okay. We move to item number 10. The Public Works and Planning conduct public protest hearing and receive written protests from property owners or their tenants currently receiving water and/or sewer service from Fresno County Service Area 44D.
So this is a similar item for 44D. The item before you today is a protest hearing to increase water and sewer service fees for carrying service area 44D, Monteverde. CSA 44D provides services to 125 residential lots as well as common area landscaping. The proposed fee structure includes a base and a usage component for water and a fixed monthly charge for sewer, and the new structure is intended to recover operation maintenance costs, payback unpaid charges, and raise appropriate reserves. At the conclusion of staff presentation, and after addressing any questions your Board may have, the public portion of the hearing should be opened by your Board and testimony received from those here today wishing to address your Board. from those here today wishing to address your Board. And at the conclusion of the public protest hearing, staff will tabulate the protest letters and report back to your Board the results. That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Thank you. Anytime prior to the close of the protest hearing, property owners wishing to submit a letter of protest or change or withdraw their earlier submitted letter of protest may make that request to the Office of the Clerk to the Board outside the Board chambers. No letters of protest will be accepted, and no withdrawals will be allowed after the protest hearing has been closed. No staff except from the clerk deputies may accept a letter of protest. The public portion of the protest hearing is now open. Are there any questions or comment from the public? If you want to make a comment, this is your time to make it. Okay, I'll bring it back to the Board.
Motion to close?
Thank you. Second. All in favor, simply saying aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved, and the public portion of this protest hearing is now closed. Tabulations of the letters of protest will now take place. Members of the public wishing to observe the tabulation process are welcome to accompany the staff.
We return to item number seven under the Administrative Office. Adopt and authorize Chairman Beck's fee to resolution approving the recommended budget, including capital project budgets of the County of Fresno for the period between July 1, 2025, and the board's sewerization adoption of the fiscal year 2526 final recommended budget.
Good morning Chairman, members of the Board. Paul Nerland, your CAO. The item before you today is very similar to what you see in the federal government with a continuing resolution that gives the county spending authority until budget is heard and approved in September. I'll introduce Paige Benavides, our Budget Director, to a very brief presentation.
Good morning, Board. This item comes before you each year at the last meeting of the fiscal year. The recommended action is to approve a recommended budget for the period of July 1, 2025, through the adoption of the final recommended budget in September. The recommended appropriations and revenues are based on the adjusted fiscal year 2425 budget to provide appropriations for county operations to continue until the final adopted budget is approved. Budget hearings will be held the week of September 15th. And holding budget hearings in September has been in place since fiscal year 201819. This allows for the closing of the previous fiscal year books and the calculation of actual available fund balance for the following fiscal year. It also allows departments to account for impacts of the state budget and the federal budget. The state budget is adopted by the legislature mid-June. Actual assessed property value also becomes available by the end of June, just a couple days from now. In terms of, rather, our office will return to your Board on July 8th with updates on impacts of the state and federal budgets on the county's budget. We will also at that time be seeking direction from your Board regarding the format of departmental budget presentations for the September 2025 hearings. This concludes my presentation, and I'll turn it over to Paul.
Any questions from the Board or? This is not a permanent continuous like the federal government has been for what, how many years? Yeah, right.
We intend to bring a balanced budget to you in September to be passed.
Well, we don't have a printing press, so we have to. So. Okay, is there any public comment on this? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the Board.
I'll move for approval.
Second. All in favor, simply saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Who is the second?
Louis.
Oh, Sewerizer, I can't hear you. Thank you. That concludes.
Move to item nine?
Now we'll take item 11, since the staff is still tabulating. Nine was continued, as mentioned, this morning to July 8th.
Oh, nine's gone, right?
Yes. And so we now move to item 11. Find that the proposed rezon of the subject 54.02 acre site from the existing AL-20, Agricultural 20 acre minimum parcel size zone district to the RR-5 zone district is consistent with the county's general plan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Tuanan Matunga with Principal Planner with the Department of Public Works and Planning. The proposal was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on October 24, 2024. As a legislative action, final action on a rezoning application must be taken by your Board. This concludes my brief presentation unless you have any questions for me at this time.
Any questions?
Again, this is in conformance with the general plan. The general plan we approved last year, I think, gave considerations for this particular area to be able to develop five acre lots, and so all this is in conformance with our new general plan.
That is correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the Board.
I'll move for Planning Commission's recommendation and staff recommendation on this item.
Okay, you've got a motion to approve. Second. By Supervisor Chavez. Okay. All in favor, simply saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Still waiting for staff to tabulate those two items. We move to item number 12. Board Sewerizer Committee reports and comments.
Who wants to? Go ahead.
I just want to recognize our Sheriff's Department. We saw that we passed the copper wire theft ordinance, and they reported that the thefts have been decreased by 82% in the first month of the ordinance. That's pretty astonishing and very proud of that. And thank you to the Board for passing it. But thank you to the Sheriff's Department for all the great work they're doing to deal with this ongoing problem. So just wanted to recognize that.
I do. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to take this opportunity. It's my understanding that this will be our county council's last official Board meeting. I want to publicly thank him for all the work. As you and I being the senior members, he's the only county council that we have known. I appreciate everything that you've done, Dan, on behalf of the residents of Fresno County, and wish you well in whatever future you may endeavor you choose to undertake.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick update for my colleagues and our chair. So tomorrow Supervisor Magzik and I will be meeting with the mayor of the City of Fresno folks, Paul, our team, to discuss some potential options with regards to collaborating on some of the homeless challenges that we have going on. We will be meeting with their team. I believe we're taking some of our team members as well and then exploring some opportunities. And what Supervisor Magzik and I will do is get back to our folks, give them a report. And I know the Chair has discretion on setting up an ad hoc committee. If there's opportunity, that we'll come back and provide a report and then go from there. Thank you.
Couple of items. On the consent agenda today, one of the items was approving me to carry the proxy of the county for NACO's convention, which will be taking place in Philadelphia. And also, I have two resolutions that are going to be voted on there at that convention as well. One of them is dealing with asking or calling on the federal government to pass a timely budget because their budgets affect all 3,069 counties. And so it's important for them to, you know, pass a budget in a timely fashion. And then also too, I have one, a proposal on immigration reform. And it seems like a lot of, a lot of individuals who are in this country have been given mixed messages depending on which administration is in office. And clearly, I don't think we've seen, seen any meaningful reform when it comes to immigration policies in this country for the last 40 years. And so the immigration reform resolution is a broad one. It includes anything like the Bersero program, which was done in this country back in the 1940s or 50s, but something that encourages people to come to this country who want to contribute and creates a more predictable path to citizenship. So those are two resolutions that I'll be bringing forward. And as a voting member, not only carrying the proxy of the county, but also on the Board of Directors of NACO, I'm excited for this upcoming conference, so just wanted to share that.
Thank you. I'm glad it's you flying back there to me. I've got two deals. The first one, and this is, you know, obviously Dan Cedarborg's last Board meeting with the county, and I want to thank Dan for over 11 years serving as our county council. And like Brian said, he's the only county council that we have known and worked with. I also want to announce that effective July 1st, Peter Wall, Chief Deputy County Counsel, will be serving as interim county counsel. Peter has worked in county council for over 13 years, and I'm confident he will serve in this role well during the transition. Peter will be on the dais in this role at the July 8th Board meeting. Now, the other thing is, I guess, there's some kind of confusion with COG on who represent us.
Since I will not be in attendance this Thursday.
You will not be in attendance?
Now it's at the last meeting.
I'm the alternate, and I am not available either.
So I'm going to appoint Gary Brettafeld to be our representative. I think he'll do a great job, and I think the interesting thing is, I had to find this through stealth. COG has not informed this Board, which I think is totally underhanded. And this whole Measure C process is a completely underhanded deal how they're going forward with it. I was on a committee that was supposed to negotiate with a group called Transportation for All, and that was, I've done many negotiations in my life. That was the worst one I've ever been in because the people that were supposed to be on my side were continually undercutting me and presenting things without even consulting me. So I'm very disappointed in this process. And I just want to reaffirm that Gary Brettafeld will be our representative there, and I'm very confident he'll do a great job.
And I just want to say, I am so eager to be attending that COG meeting, and I know a lot of people at the COG meeting are really looking forward to me being there. So it will be my pleasure to serve in that capacity.
Okay.
And I'll just mention, Mr. Chairman, for the record, that both the bylaws of COG and amended JPA agreement provide for any supervisor that attends in your place to attend that meeting on behalf of the county.
Don't be shy.
That I can guarantee will not happen.
Item number 13, Board Appointments.
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Louise, you have one?
Go ahead, Louise.
Go ahead, Louise.
Just have one, Mr. Chair. I will be appointing one of our city firefighters, Mr. Kevin Reynolds. He does live in District Four, but he does work in District Three. A lot of great references from him, and I will be appointing him to the Emergency Medical Care Committee.
Thank you for doing that. Go ahead.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I have one. I'd like to appoint Cindy Greer to the District Five seat previously held by Robert Actis Jr. This is to the Auberry Volunteer Fire and Emergency Services Citizen Advisory Committee.
Okay, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to reappoint Debbie Zong to the Behavioral Health Board in the Public Interest A Position, expiring on April 1, 2028. Would also like to appoint Erica Martinez to the Children and Families Commission to replace Maria Svalos in the West Side B Position for a term ending January 4, 2027.
And, Mr. Chairman, I need to rescind the previous appointment of Kiana Heinz Taylor to the Behavioral Health Board due to a conflict that she has. Thank you.
Alrighty. Is there any public comment on these appointees? I will bring it back to the Board for a motion.
So moved for approval.
Second by Supervisor Chavez.
Thank you.
You got that. It was Supervisor Chavez.
Yes, thank you.
All in favor, simply saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move to?
We do have staff that.
Oh, okay.
You ready for item eight and 10? Okay, we'll take up item eight. Can you turn on your mic?
Chris Bump with the Department of Public Works and Planning. Staff has completed counting the ballots for Water Works District 40. Out of 70 possible protests, we have received 17, which is approximately 24%. There is not a majority protest, and staff recommends your Board approve recommended action A.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a quick comment. This particular item is going to hurt a lot of folks who are on fixed incomes there. The rates that were being recommended by an independent consultant raise rates, I think, 300%. And so I'm going to move for staff's recommendation, item A. But also too, I want to direct staff to apply immediately to the state for relief, like what we've done for other districts that, where there are individuals who are on fixed incomes.
By Cantua Creek and El Poblanera, which we did, okay.
And we do have the application ready, similar to what was done for Cantua Creek. So we'll be submitting that.
Do you have a second yet?
Not yet.
Second?
Okay, I have a second. By Supervisor Brettafeld. All right. All in favor, simply saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Now go to item number 10.
So staff has completed counting the ballots for CSA 44D Monte Verde. And out of 126 possible protests, we've received 11, which is approximately 9%. There is not a majority protest, and staff recommends your Board approve recommended action A.
I will move for recommended action A.
Second.
Have a second by Supervisor Brettafeld.
Thank you.
All in favor, simply saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
That takes us to item 14, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons designed to address the Board on any manner not on this agenda.
Okay, this is time for public comment for anything not under, on the agenda and under our jurisdiction.
Okay. Good afternoon or morning. Chairman Mendez and Supervisors, thank you for this moment to share some information. My name is Cindy Fukuyama, and I'd like to comment on a remark that was made near the end of the Board meeting on June 10th. It was stated that there were law enforcement officers killed on January 6, 2021, at our nation's Capitol. It has been determined by the Chief Medical Examiner in Washington DC and reported by numerous reliable news sources that four people that died that day were civilians. The Chief Medical Examiner in Washington DC at that time was Dr. Francisco Diaz. Dr. Diaz stated that the deceased were Benjamin Phillips, 50, from Greentown, Pennsylvania, who died of hypertensive cardiovascular disease, which is a heart attack. Kevin Gresen, 55, from Athens, Alabama, who also died of hypertensive cardiovascular disease, which was a heart attack. Roseanne Boylan, 34, of Kennesaw, Georgia, who died of an acute amphetamine intoxication. And Ashley Babbitt, 35, a U.S. Air Force veteran from San Diego, who was shot by a Capitol Police Officer. It was also reported on January 8th that Officer Brian Sicknick, who had been at the Capitol on January 6th, passed away January 7th. In April, April 19th of 21, after completing his final autopsy, Dr. Diaz determined that Officer Brian Sicknick died of natural causes. He suffered two strokes at the base of his brain, which was caused by a blood clot. He also stated there was no evidence of internal or external injuries. My sources for this information that came out in April of 21 are the Washington Post, Newsweek, NPR, and multiple TV news networks. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Is there any other public comment? If you want to, you better come up here.
I'm trying to get other people to come up here. Supervisors, Mr. Nerlin, Heather Cruthers, Chief Deputy County Counsel.
And Alma Navarro, Executive Secretary for Dan.
We just wanted to be here to support Dan without hoping to get him emotional. We know today is his last supervisor meeting, and we just wanted you all to know that our office has really appreciated his service to us.
Very compassionate man. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. I'm surprised he hadn't got sick of us before already. So with that, I'll go to public comment on closed session. Is there anyone here to comment on closed session? Hearing none. County Council? County Council. Paul's in your court here.
Mr. Chairman, we are not anticipating any announcements out of closed session, so if the Board chooses, it may adjourn following closed session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a second? Second by Supervisor Pacheco.
It's just Supervisor Chavez that I can't hear. He speaks so softly.
All in favor, simply saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.